I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a form of what would we like to do with the consent agenda. I move acceptance by second. All in favor? The next upcoming select board meeting is Thursday, January 5th, and that will also be here. Do you have any announcement? I don't. No? I don't either, so we can get right into the business items. Do we want to start with one? Are they coming or?
I was expecting them, but I'm not sure.
So do you want to wait and move?
We can if you'd like to.
Sure.
Give them minutes.
Okay. Do we want to get into committee appointments? Why not?
Here's some noise. That might be them.
I see an application for appointment to the planning board was submitted by Jamie Wallace. And appointment of Sean Shutt, Marine Resource Committee, is also considered. I know both of these men, and I think they would both be a great addition to each one of those positions. String up qualifications.
And then we also have two additional. Gabriel Whitney, newer resident to West Bath, has applied to the planning board, and Jeremy is being reappointed as an alternate member of the planning board.
Yeah, those came in after the pack was put together.
Both have been reviewed. Both of the new planning board members have been reviewed and recommended by the planning board, and Sean Shutt was recommended by the Marine Resource Committee as well.
So I would like to make a motion that we accept the appointments of Jamie Wallace and Gabriel Whitney for the planning board, and Sean Shutt for the Marine Resource Committee.
Second. And Jeremy Wallace.
Yes, and Jeremy Wallace as a alternate.
And second.
Okay, all in favor? Yep, that's nice to have some new.
It'll be good. New energy.
Is that Chris's son?
Yes. Or Barney's. I'm not sure which one. Jamie's. Chris Floyd. They look so much alike, and they have... It's Chris's?
That's one of them.
Very nice, Jamie. I think that would be a great addition. Is he the one that just bought?
Uh huh.
On Rocky Ridge? No.
Stevie's.
Stevie's, okay. So it was... He doesn't have a wall, so just bought for on Rocky Ridge. They're overtaking the hills. Wallace says we'll replace the hill.
Could be.
The next generation loses some time. That's another way of getting some fresh chances.
Well, a lot of our already cousins saw.
So is this Walden?
Yes.
Okay. So we can skip back to article number one. Pretty clean and witty line version of the final lease were provided to the town attorney. Summarized changes are provided in the body of the email message, which include the final lease documents.
Yes. And I believe we concluded all the necessary renegotiations at the meeting at which Mr. Ballard was in attendance. So I move that we approve the lease as presented.
I don't see any... So they were just cleaned up. There's nothing really changed.
Yeah, there's not a substantial change. There was some line of modifications to the lease to make it a little bit more simple and in for full transparency there at the last meeting. For the record, Matt Kennedy, while they're duals. So at the last meeting, we discussed that it's the town's preference for the road access road to be north of the transfer station. However, due to where our point of their connection is, which is south of the transfer session, uh, station, which is like on a pole on Arthur J. Reno, that we wanted to make it, I mean, we'll did, if we put it in the lease, that we will do everything we possibly can to make it so that the road comes in from the north. But if for whatever reason, there's some, like the utility's not willing to work with us, or the transfer station doesn't want us to be running a pole aligned like around the station, then it gives us that flexibility to come in south of the transfer station. That was the most significant change that was made. But it was, it's still our full intention to, uh, to arrest we can to come in from the north.
So you have a motion?
I second. The motion? All in favor?
And I'll sign in on the town's behalf and send them along. If that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
That seems like the right way to do things.
Congratulations.
Oh, Justin Dunn.
Dunn is.
Sorry, thanks. I thought you said I wasn't here.
I know. You guys have been, you could really answer all of our questions. The last meeting, I think, was a good meeting and you know, sets the people in this up.
Great. Yeah, well, obviously we'll do more work on the planning board about it. And we'll make sure we're on that process as well.
Absolutely. That's good, and I hope you have a very successful tension.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Yeah, we look forward to working with the town.
What was I saying? Welcome to S2.
Yeah. And I've been in communication with Mike Carter, which we county, about the tower. So we'll make sure to coordinate with him in that effort as well. And make sure that we work together to make sure that both projects.
Yeah, that's great. I've seen the email traffic, so that's good.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, yeah, a pleasure. Awesome.
Thank you. This is item three. The control schedule was provided for select board consideration. This is the 2023 holiday office closure schedule.
Really nothing markedly different. Pretty much follows what we normally do. November 2nd day falls on a Tuesday next year, so we included Monday as a holiday. That's no sense. That probably would be what the state does anyway, wouldn't it? Probably. Yeah, usually they decide at the last minute. Right. But if we decide now, then the office staff can make plans. Yes, we appreciate that.
I made motion as we accept the 2023 holiday and office closure schedule as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Town administrators report.
Okay, on November 3rd, Jonathan came to the board to talk about property at 54 Shoal Cove Road that had the garage within the setback. He met with DEP on the site. DEP doesn't feel that there's any agreement that's necessary between the town and the property owner. They reviewed the 2005 ordinance and determined that it conformed at the time. But it's now a legally existing non-conforming structure because of erosion that has occurred since. So no follow-up is necessary with that. I just wanted to let you know so it wasn't left out there hanging. As Matt Kennedy said, they've been working with Sagahaw County Communications to make sure that the tower is sited appropriately vis a vis the solar project. Our land use ordinance...
Does he have a question?
Yes.
So they determined that they found a site up there that was suitable for the town? Sagahaw? Because they were using testing.
Yes, they did a survey. I don't have the results of the survey, but...
But it was a promising?
Yes, absolutely.
Good. Very good.
Our land use ordinance has a 150-foot height requirement. The tower that they would like to construct is 180 feet. So I would like permission to contact the town attorney to see if there's anything we could do to allow an increase in height aside from an ordinance change. Maybe not, but Sally might have an idea for, to make an exception for this type of project.
All right.
Please. Yeah, because I think if they had to work with 150 feet, that they probably would. But I think it's in the best interest of the town and the county to make sure that we get that tower constructed so that it's really effective. To make it official, I move that the town administrator be authorized to consult with the town attorney concerning the height restrictions in our planning, uh, let's see, land use ordinance is, that's what I want to say.
I second that.
Thank you.
Shall we vote? All in favor? That's kind of exciting, I think.
Yeah, there are a couple of good projects going. Back in October, we had a public hearing for the general assistance ordinance. Somehow the paperwork got missing, went missing. So if you would, we need the ordinance signed again. What's it? It's currently here. I'll take it. Thank you. Residents sand is available. Steve filled out the connects box with complete dirt. Residents will be invited to take two buckets of sand for residential purposes. It will be unlocked during town office hours. And we're thinking about getting magnetic signs that we can just attach to the box that say it's for residential use, the limit, the hours, and who to contact if they need assistance. Because it is kind of tricky to open. So I think some people might have a little trouble getting the door open to get sand, so one of us can just run out there during the day if they need help. And with the work that's been done in the parking lot, the parking lot should not be as kind of safe as it has been sometimes. Yes, we're not having an icing problem. Very happy about that. We received the $225,000 impact fees back for the Lee Farm project from DOT. So Julie has that to deposit. Very excited about that.
Yeah.
Little injection of revenue. The county budget caucus is coming up on January 5th. I got a call from the town and the county administrator today. And she said that she's having a lot of trouble getting a municipal officer from District 3 to be nominated to serve. So she asked me to mention it to this board. And if you run into anybody, it could be a school board member or a municipal officer. It has to be an elected official. This town or another town within the district.
Are you doing it yet?
I have two more years left.
I'll do it. That's going to say, you're going to get your pen and send your...
Yeah.
You did it.
All right.
I did.
Your experience. Okay, I'll let her know. So please.
You better get the other towns to let them know that you're running and we have a vote.
Because I can't remember the guy from Pittsburgh who's on here. Is he still there, Chris?
Yes.
Nixon. He's still...
I think he's still there.
We'll make it an elected representative company. Is it one elected official and one?
One elected and...
One person, right?
Julie will get the word out.
Yeah.
She'll out get the word out.
Julie will obviously get the word out.
And I'll let Amber know, and I'm sure she'll be talking to people too. Because we'll be here on January 2nd. Yes, the timing is unfortunate. In that respect, we've made it to those meetings in the past. Yep. The fire chief has three firefighters that he would like to send to Academy in January. It's $1,000 per firefighter. What he would like to do is sell three of his breathing apparatus, the ones that have been replaced with ARCA funds, for $500 apiece approximately, to get money to put toward the tuition that's necessary to send the firefighters to Academy. So he's looking for permission to, how did he put it? Requesting permission to trade the three units to tri-county training towards tuition credit and sell the remaining seven units that he has for future training needs. If we have better equipment to replace this. Yeah, he's already received the ones that were appropriated through ARCA funds. So the alternative would be that this would be, the old ones would be sitting in a corner somewhere? Yeah. He's going to save four of them. He has a total of 14. So seven units for future training and three units to tri-county training. And that means that we have three more better trained firefighters? Yes. That seems like a win-win-win. 220 hours of classroom and practical evaluations.
I think what impresses me is they're not just coming to the town and asking us to figure it out before course. They're finding ways with what they have.
Yes.
Which is what Jonathan always does. Which I really respect, so, yeah.
I move we approve this request.
Second. All in favor?
That's it. That's all I have tonight.
Can you say agenda items?
I'm wondering about the January 5th meeting and what you think you would like to tackle that night. I know that we have some items bubbling in the background, but...
I do think we need to revisit the role of the road committee?
Yes, apparently. And the the situation with the planning board. They're going to elect a chair. Do you want to deal with anything else that night?
I really think that's going to, if we don't make any really heavy withstanding, something that really needs to be done with, that's going to be a lot. And I think both sessions could potentially be very emotional. So I think that's plenty.
Okay, sounds good.
Will that be held here at the fire station?
It'll be here.
It'll be here?
Yeah, Suzanne requested that it be here because she'll just have, she would have just had surgery. And she wants to have an opportunity to stand against the wall if she needs to.
Any, anything else? Any public comments, issues?
Yeah, yes. I'd like to get the board question unstuck. We had six of us met up there. Five people said, uh, let's go ahead, and I said no. So we went with the five. I didn't like that, but that's okay. Bath, when they took it back, I believe that we had an agreement that we would hire two smartest. Bath's attorney had stepped in and said we need to do a bid. So I, my personal opinion is the people who were on the waterfront that day are not strongly in favor of that position, but they are stuck. My view is you are hiring a professional. You don't hire the cheapest attorney. You hire the person who can get the job done. I thought that's what we all agreed to there that day. So we're just kind of stuck. Bruce himself wants to do a, he wants to do the whole thing. I, I think he's got the idea that that's not what's going to take place. I would like to see the town just go ahead to West Bath and get it done. Have Christine go out and talk to Bruce and say we want to hire you to evaluate the practicality of conducting a survey and getting it done. I, I do not believe that, and he's told me already, he doesn't believe that there is sufficient data available for any competent surveyor to put their name on a survey, which ultimately means we're going to jump back to either legislature or to the court and the county commissioners. We just need to get it moving. We'll be talking about it seven years from now.
For another five years. So you're suggesting, to summarize in my head, you're suggesting that what we should choose to do is authorize Christine to have a conversation with the surveyor?
Yes.
And see what the practicality is?
I would hire her to evaluate the data available and determine whether it is within the range, which we're not above, of words, within the capacity to, for a surveyor to certify that he's found a specific location. And he's going to say no. We need to get, we need to get through that step to get past West Bath's attorney.
And that's it. Right, and so once that, once they, we have a surveyor saying there's not sufficient data, then we can petition the legislature or go to court, whichever is most feasible.
Whichever. If you go to the legislature, you, you have to have public care. And the whole thing can blow up about nothing.
Right.
If you go to the commissioners, they will also have a public care. But nobody does the commissioning next, so. And they'll have the chance to look at the data and dig into it. As far as the fee, pretty much statute says it will be split anyway. So if we upfront it as a central time, then in the end, it should come out just about where we might have wished we would go. But right now, we all agree out there, Christine has nothing to act upon because we didn't have her out there to write notes.
So. I think the city administrator's hands are kind of, yes, tied too because council is telling you, you know, we need to have at least two quotes. I don't see that that's going to happen. How are we going to put out a request when we really don't have anything to? A request for a surveyor to go look and find out that there's nothing to... Yeah, there's nothing to say. There's no place to start the survey. So it's like a catch-22. Right. Right, so, and we should do, we should, we should really get this done before the water line changes again. I move we authorize Christine to proceed with conversations with the surveyor we've been in touch with. I don't remember. So you're ready?
Bruce Martin.
Second. All in favor? Did you get the Bruce Martin?
Thank you. Trying to get this rolling again.
Any other public comment?
Yes, public, do you want to talk?
I flew back specifically for water testing. That was originally supposed to be at 1:00. And it turned around to be at 12:00. I was there at 12:00 and they had all left.
Who were they?
I'm on a clay board. My fellow.
Do you want to introduce yourself for the board?
Uh, David Warren.
So Warren, who's the chair for Marine Resources, conducts the water testing. And they called me at 12:00 o'clock that day with the test and saying, I don't see them here. So it's kind of a tricky situation because he didn't do the water testing. So Warren's saying he does not get his five hours.
It was originally supposed to be for 1:00. They changed to 12:00 without calling anybody. The only reason I knew is I called you. And you said you called Warren.
Yeah. Oh, so it's your, it's your conservation hours. Right.
Yeah.
So he basically missed out on five hours because we changed the time.
So number one, I think we need to have a discussion with Warren.
I'm not looking to get in trouble.
No, no, but...
But at least make some phone calls or mail something out.
Well, I'm concerned, like, do we need to have a town staff there to make sure that they don't leave early and now? Because, I mean, at the last Marine Resources meeting, they were talking about, you know, leaving and not waiting for people, but then Shuddy comes in and says, you know, they waited for me for half an hour before, but he called them.
They've made special trash cleanups in January for people who get tired of it.
And we're here in a lot of that, so again, I just wonder if we need to have a discussion with Warren. And we need to have, again, maybe policies and procedures so that everybody's treated the same.
Yeah, my friend Brad, who was at the water testing, 11:46, he says, you, you coming? He says, we're leaving soon. I'm on my way. It's 12:00. I mean, I should have heard the text. I get there, I'm driving around, nobody there. I see some vehicles, but there's no one going. So I went right to the town hall after that, and I said, what do I find?
Yeah.
Really?
Well, let's have a conversation. Communication needs to be improved in general. Because there's been a lot of different issues that have come up. Right. It's been a long time since we've had the, as, as an official, how you're doing kind of thing.
I don't think I have since I've been here. I have since I've been here.
They do have a meeting on the 28th of December, which is the last Wednesday in December. I don't know if you want to attend or you want to have them come to select board meeting?
Let's attend. What time is that?
It's at 6:00.
And is it here?
Yeah, it is here. And I'll remind you of that. Because it's a little out of your normal schedule. The day before that is a pseudo-holiday.
I will do my best not to have a flu shot reaction. I am sorry that happened, and we definitely look into it and try to make sure that these licenses are important, that, you know, everybody gets the right time and the right messages and communication, hopefully, will improve.
And I think this is a really good meeting to attend because they're talking about licenses and whether to increase them. Warren had... There are two people that have been consistently putting in time to get licenses, and Warren has told them that he wanted to increase licenses. And then when the meeting comes, he says he only wants to give out one extra license or none.
Hey, I got mine for about 20-something years.
Right.
At least. I got chased by John, what was his hat size?
Pants.
For two years, I put time in, so... I hate the way he winds her.
But the message just isn't consistent.
Right, exactly. Promising things on the street and then coming to a meeting and...
Yeah, and the the number of licenses is what's the current status of the amount of product as well as who's actually big.
Right.
So and it really shouldn't be up to one person to decide anyway.
Well, that's why, you know, they're... They were talking about at the last meeting and they decided to remind all the license holders of the meeting to get more input.
The state did come down to a survey of the flats and grounds called Van Longhold. So the state is surveying all these schools. I'm not sure behind this school or not, but they did those two schools.
They don't enjoy attending our meetings there. But the Sheriff's Department has been coming there.
Oh, good.
But you should have gotten the results from the state. They must have them now. From the M.R. and Boothby.
Is that... oh, then someone here could do, Christine?
I'll reach out to them and see if they have any thoughts of that.
Yeah, thank you.
Of course, the holidays, you know.
Right, well, it could be a little... It doesn't have to be decided immediately.
They won't play enough.
Get it on their... get it on their radar, right.
Well, as long as nobody tries to muscle in.
Yeah.
God, jeez. The embassy bunches that again. Any other public comments?
Howie?
I just got the same issue, so I... somehow the ball got dropped and, you know, we always did have two opportunities in the fall to get our time in. And I didn't even get the water sample letter. I don't know if it was where the ball got dropped there, but I'm lacking like one hour.
Can you just state your name?
Howard Kane.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've had a license longer than anybody, I think, in this town right now, but but like I said, I just have any opportunity to get some time in. I mean, I didn't have an opportunity and I'm gonna be short one hour. And so I guess if I make this meeting, they said it might count towards my time, so here I am. But...
Well, I think we need to get better communication and maybe... Or both will be at that meeting or whatever.
Yeah, absolutely, I have to make all the readings to get my time. I was still gonna be one hour short. And so they said that possibly I could, you know, get...
And how many hours do you need?
I need five. That's what the water tests are. Like I showed you, I flew back just for that.
Yeah.
I was taking help or take over shift errors.
And the committee did agree that attendance at select board meetings could count towards time, so they'll both get time recognized for this, because it's an hour.
Want to come to the next board meeting?
Perhaps you might.
I don't...
Have a good year next time.
I just don't want to see this keep happening. And I think what it is, when you promise other people licenses and you try to keep that promised, you're gonna pull them out of somewhere.
Right. Yeah. I think that the mistake is probably unintentional, but in this era of conspiracy theories, you don't want it to look like somebody was playing a trick on somebody. So we need to make sure that those things are...
Yeah, like I said, if I called the town several times,
Yeah.
I called Warren, I wouldn't have known he'd changed it if I didn't call him. So I would have shown up, I won.
Yeah, and I think we just need some policies and procedures. He could have reached out to Carly, she could have contacted some people and put it on the website.
Yeah, a few other people that were after water tests, one way or the other, so I called them.
He possibly could give time to somebody to notify personally these guys or something, you know? And so, yeah, we always did used to do that. So somehow this year, like I say, there was always two opportunities in the fall, no matter what, there always has been. And all of a sudden, this year, there was one, you know? And so it left me, I... But, you know, all of a sudden, I didn't get the water sample listing. For some reason, I changed addresses and, you know, it could have been the veil or whatever and so... But like I say, I mean, that's a possible solution that somebody, you know, could contact everybody and, you know, something come out, but
Yeah.
it might solve some of this issue.
Well, we'll figure it out, make it better insofar as humanly possible. As long as the plaintiffs don't get culled. Thank you both for coming, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Well, here's your extract.
It said, "This meeting will count as an hour now." We talked Marine Resources, it's like a business dinner without the meal.
You should have told this colleague. Okay. I make a motion that we adjourn and go into executive session pursuant to 1 MRS, Chapter 13, 405, 6A, to discuss the personnel matter. Second, all in favor? Thank you.
Do I sign anything?
No, I've got your name for the minutes.
You too.
Yeah, thanks.